Okay, um, tonight we got a special night. We got a lot of important people here tonight, that's for sure. So, okay, if you could go ahead and stand, we're gonna say the prayer and the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Heavenly Father, as we always do, we open this meeting up with our thanks for your love, your mercy, your grace, your blessings, your healing, your keep, your All Father. We just thank you for blessing our county. We thank you for blessing our state, our nation, our world, and just thank you for all that you do for us on a day-to-day basis. It's in Jesus' most precious and holy name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, I appreciate everybody coming tonight. So, let's start off with the agenda. Have, um, the council has looked at the agenda. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, President Callahan, we have one correction to the agenda this evening. Like to amend the agenda to remove the update on the Regional Medical Center project by Mr. Kuzel on this evening.
Okay, that'd be great.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and second to amend the agenda and pull Mr. Kuzel off the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to call the roll?
Yep.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay. All right, and I think we'll have him rescheduled somewhere, I think, Jess, December 16th?
Correct.
Yep, so he'll be back with us December 16th and give us a report on the new hospital. Okay, next on the agenda is going to be the dispersments of October 21st and October 28th. The council's had a chance to take a look at that. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments, council? Okay, hearing none. The chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, tonight's first thing is the Talbot County Free Library, the 100th anniversary. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read that into the record for us, please?
100th anniversary Talbot County Free Library, whereas the Talbot County Free Library began celebrating its centennial year on Wednesday, October 15th, 2025. And whereas, founded in 1925, the Talbot County Free Library, the library was established with funds provided by subscriptions from the citizens of the county and members of the Library Association, raising a total of $4,149. The library board selected two rooms on the fourth floor of the Avon Realty Building located in 11 South Washington Street in Easton at a rent of $15 per month. And the official operation of the library began under the careful guidance of Caroline Burnett Walker, the first champion of a free public library in Talbot County. Over the years, generous benefactors have contributed to the growth and development of the library, transforming it into the pillar of the Talbot County community it is today. And whereas, in 1941, through the generosity of Mr. and Mrs. James Dixon's and Mr. and Mrs. Lindsey and Mrs. David Lindsey Gillisby's donation of 1,500 books, pamphlets, periodicals, mats, and other materials, the Maryland Room was established. And whereas, also in 1941, the library began providing regular bookmobile services throughout Talbot County, achieving recognition as the first bookmobile on the eastern shore and the second in Maryland, traveling to 26 public schools and 17 deposit stations on a bi-weekly basis during the school year. And whereas, since its founding, the library has relocated several times to accommodate the growth of the Talbot County community, has added branches, and has increased its services to accommodate the changing needs of our community, providing not only books, but also multimedia resources, broadband internet, public access computers, technology training, and lifelong learning opportunities for all ages. And whereas, for 100 years, the Talbot County Free Library has played an invaluable role in promoting equity, opportunity, and civic engagement by ensuring free access to information, supporting workforce development, and offering programs and classes that expand knowledge and spark creativity. And has been and continues to be a place of inspiration, imagination, and inclusion, strengthening our community through education, innovation, and connection. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, in appreciation of and respect for all the wonderful and impactful work done by the board members, staff, and volunteers of the Talbot County Free Library, do hereby recognize the library's centennial celebration and encourage all residents to join in honoring this milestone and to take advantage of the abundant resources and services provided by the library. In witness thereof, we have hereunto set our hand this 28th day of October in the year 2025, the 249th year of the independence of the United States and the 365th year of the establishment of Talbot County, Maryland, given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 28th day of October in the year of our Lord, 2025.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Good job. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to put it into the record. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay. Any of you want to come on up? Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Well, we'll start. You can give remarks, then we'll come up for the picture.
I don't have a lot of remarks. I just want to say that I think Susan said it all in the proclamation, that we really are here to serve the community. It's service above self, that's our motto. That's the Rotary motto, but it's also the motto for the library. Everybody who works for the library is here to help people. They have a passion to help people, and I would not be able to do it without our volunteers and without our staff and without our board and everybody else, the foundation, and our friends. We have so many people that are so tied to the library in some way, and you can speak to almost anybody on the street in Talbot County, and they have a library story that is so meaningful to them, usually from childhood, but not necessarily, or about children. But we are about people of all ages, and it's not just about books. I always say, books are just the tip of the iceberg, and everything underneath it is something to discover at the library. So, that's all I really have to say, and we hope to be here for another 100 years. And we thank you so much for the support that you've given us over the years. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lusher, you want to start off?
Sure. Well, thank you for all that you do, because you are a pillar of this community. You are probably used by more citizens of Talbot County, as I said, at the centennial celebration. There are probably more library cardholders in this community than licensed drivers. And that's because the bar is so low. You just need to be able to sign your own name. My son, when he was, I don't know, three or something like, four years old, when he could sign his own name and get his own library card, that was a special moment for him, as it was when I was a child as well, to be able to borrow books under my or other library materials under my own name. I went to the library for movies. We borrowed not only artwork, but music and artworks and all kinds of things from the library when I was growing up. What you do to provide resources for people to do everything from file their taxes to grow their businesses to raise their children, you touch so many lives in this community. It is such vital work. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Steph?
I'll just keep in the spirit of thanks, and it was awesome to, I mean, it's awesome that the entire history of, you know, when this started is in this proclamation. So, I think that's pretty awesome. And speaking of the multimedia part, right, so books are books are books, but thanks for keeping the spirit of a blockbuster alive, where you can still go in and look at movies and check one out. Yeah, so thank you.
And you'd be amazed at how many people still check out DVDs. I mean, we have a lot of people in this county that love their DVDs, so.
Absolutely. Appreciate all that you all do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Also wanted to comment on the celebration that occurred last week, which was just fabulous, and seeing all these people that looked like they came out of, uh, what is it?
The prohibition.
Well, prohibition, yeah. It was just great, really good time.
I saw you in the speakeasy.
And just to add to what my colleague said, last week was fantastic. You did an amazing job transforming that library into that event last week. But thank you for all the work that you do, and I realize that my 70-year-old father still uses DVD, so please keep keeping those DVDs in the library.
We're glad to hear that.
Yes, he does. He does. So, thank you for all your hard work and all that you do.
Thank you.
And same thing. Thank you, guys. Thank all the volunteers and the people that work at the library. You guys really mean a lot to us, and you really set a tone for this county, and I can't wait for St. Michael's to get on the same wave as the new expansion and all that.
Yeah, so we're hoping for February.
You are. Great, great. Well, we're looking forward to it. So, come on up, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, the next proclamation is Nace Day of 2025. Madam Secretary, could you read that into the record, please?
Proclamation, 158th anniversary Nace's Day celebration. Whereas, since 1867, the town of Trap, Maryland, has hosted the celebration known as Nace's Day, the longest continuously held celebration in the United States commemorating the emancipation of enslaved persons, which occurred in Maryland on November 1st, 1864, and on which date, Maryland, by the popular vote of the people, adopted a new state constitution which abolished slavery in the state. And whereas, the annual Nace's Day celebration, now in its 158th year, was the creation of Nathaniel Nace Hopkins, a Trap native of African-American descent and his fellow citizens of the community of Trap, to recognize and celebrate this important historical event. And whereas, Nathaniel Hopkins continued to build upon and expand this celebration for the remainder of his life, organizing and leading the celebration parade for 33 years and ensuring that it would continue after his passing. And whereas, though born into slavery, Nathaniel Hopkins, affectionately known as Uncle Nace by all who knew him, enlisted in the Union Army as a member of the United States Colored Troops and returned to his native county to work for the betterment of the county's African-American community as a civic leader. And whereas, Nathaniel Hopkins was a highly respected leader in the Trap community and throughout Talbot County, and was the individual primarily responsible for the establishment of the first school for African-American children in Trap, for the creation of free Black communities throughout Talbot County, for advocating to the county's elected officials for the construction of roads to service these communities, as was instrumental in the establishment of Scott's United Methodist Church, a pillar and mainstay of the Trap community. And whereas, throughout its 158-year history, the Hopkins family and the community of Trap have kept the observance of commemorating this day of important significance to the state of Maryland, Talbot County, and particularly the African-American community, to both celebrate and honor not just this historic event in our history, but to honor a man who had accomplished so much for the citizens of Talbot County and who had earned the respect, trust, and admiration of so very many of our Talbot County citizens. And whereas, Nace Hopkins' legacy continues today through the Nace Hopkins Scholarship Fund for local youth seeking higher education and through the great commitment shown by his descendants, who have ensured that the legacy of Nathaniel Hopkins' personal integrity, civic duty, and leadership will remain a shining example for generations to come. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby recognize the 158th anniversary of the Nace's Day celebration, which brings the citizens of Trap and Talbot County together to honor the achievements and legacy of Talbot County's native son, Nathaniel Uncle Nace Hopkins, given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 28th day of October in the year of our Lord, 2025.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good job. Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Go ahead and put that into the record. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie? Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay. Let's see here. Yes, sir, come on up.
Um, I'm just coming on behalf of the residents that are here.
Yes, sir. Would you mind sitting down, please? There you go. There you go.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, sir.
That's all right. That's all right. I just want people to hear you and know who you are, that's all.
Okay. My name is Dale Kevin Brown the first. I'm a great-great-great-grandson. And on behalf of the family here, we have on the front row.
Yes, sir.
We have Reverend Brown, who is a great-great-grandson, who has helped lead many of the ministers on the eastern shore. We have next to him another great-great-grandson, Walter Billy Brown, who has played in most organs, keyboards, and anything that has pipes or keys on the eastern shore, and he played for Billy Graham at one time before he passed. And then you have the gentleman, the other great-grandson on the front row.
Yeah.
Former chief of police, Walter Chase Senior.
Yeah.
And we have another great-great-grandson, David Chase, sitting back there. And the rest of us are in the continuum. And I know that was kind of a brief history of what he's done, but he not only had an impact on the African-American community, but probably impacted some of you and your families, because in the state of Maryland, they had four drafts during the Civil War. Talbot County only had to participate in one, because when Uncle Nace came back, he recruited others to go. And so, the African-American population of volunteer was so great that we did not have, Talbot County did not have to participate in the last three drafts. So, he was instrumental in doing that. So, that probably had an impact on many families of those that did not have to go to fight because he did that.
Right, right.
And if you're gonna ask us to come up, could I move three of the chairs so I could get these three gentlemen up here for us?
Yep, yep. Let's say a couple of things here. Yep, let's say a couple of words here. Keisha?
Well, first and foremost, I remember the Nace's Day parade ever since I was a little girl, and in the Talbot Twirlers baton group, every year we participated in that parade. And today, I'm so glad that it still exists and that we still continue to have this parade and this celebration, recognizing Uncle Nace. So, thank you all for coming out tonight. This is an honor for us to be able to present this proclamation to the family and give you something that you will be able to hang up and recognize for years to come. So, thank you all for coming out tonight, and I look forward to the parade as well.
Well, Nace and parade is such a spectacular commentary on the history of Talbot County, and really a very special day to celebrate and what we celebrate. So, I'm glad that you continue to sponsor this, continue to put it together, and we just are very indebted for preserving our history. Thank you.
Well, Frederick Douglass said, "I will never forget the difference between those who fought for liberty and those who fought for slavery." And that's, fighting for liberty is precisely what Nace Hopkins signed up to do and led others to do. And Trap is just uniquely positioned in the entire United States of all the towns that sent their sons to fight. Only Trap has kept that celebration going every year right up today. And that is something for this community to be proud of. Congratulations.
Echo. Everything's already been said. But here's what I would like to add, though, just because this is just what's written on this document. It's just a snapshot, as we all know. So, I'll throw in a plug for the exhibit that is right now at the Talbot County Historical Society. So, anyone who's interested in all of this wonderful history and to really see it come to life, I'd encourage everyone to stop on down there and take a look at that, because it's truly amazing piece of Talbot County history. So, thank you all for being here. Just really appreciate it. Thank you.
And I would say the same thing. I really appreciate all the descendants coming here tonight, and I really appreciate it. It means a lot. 158 years is a big deal. It sure is. And you kept it going for that long, and.
Some of us might not be here for the next one.
I know. Exactly, exactly. And I just want to throw a special thanks to Mr. Chase. I, you know, I kid him all the time, you know. He's a, I tell you, he's a great man. He's done a lot. And it's people like that that bring out the good in people. And I've worked with him for several years on a lot of committees. And I tell you, Walter, that the stuff that you bring to these meetings and bring to Talbot County and bring to Trap means a lot to a lot of people, this whole community. So, we love you, and I truly mean that. And anything that we can do for you and your family, that's for sure, we're here for you. I can tell you that. Okay.
And on behalf of the family in Scott's church, which he founded, please come down and visit with us on Saturday and enjoy the time, the food, and we have plans for you.
That sounds great. That sounds great.
Is I can move these three chairs?
Oh, absolutely. Yep, yep.
Yeah, well, I want you guys to actually come up front.
Yeah.
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 Oh, wow.
That's it.
Can you just fold it up?
All right.
Just give it to me. I'll give it to you. That's what I was doing. Give it to me. Congratulations.
He does.
At left.
He does.
All right, I missed him some heads and all the side. There we go. That's a little better. Okay, is there anyone else back there that I can't see? Okay, all right. I think we're ready. All right, ready? One, two, three.
Seven days.
Perfect. How are these guys?
Yeah, we're all good.
Okay.
Then you just fell.
It's a sign.
Okay, save audit.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody here from the Historical Society that can come up?
Thank you, congratulations.
I got her over to text her.
Who, Dee?
She's down to the store. No, she didn't. Paul Callahan did. Did she request this? Did she request this?
This is the stuff we need to hear. If she's, if she's out there. Yep. Thank you, Sarah.
I thought it was Paul.
Yeah. It was perfect. Okay, next on the agenda, we'll, we'll go ahead and start the public hearing. We'll go ahead and, Mary Kay, you want to come on up?
I'm gonna start with my apologies because I'm fighting allergies and things, so if I cough too much...
We understand. We understand.
I know how that is.
It's that time of the year, but...
Yep, no problem. No problem.
So, good evening, Councilman. Thank you very much for having us this evening. Talbot County was the recipient of CDBG COVID funding in 2020 and again in April of 2025. In April, the council entered into an agreement with DHCD for an additional $116,500. The council then partnered with sub recipients Neighborhood Service Center for $68,000 and St. Michael's Community Center for $48,500. These funds are being used by our local food pantries for food, equipment, and support staff. Assistant Secretary Carol, Carol Gilbert recently offered to provide an additional $150,000 as a second amendment to our COVID CV grant to our two existing sub recipients. These funds can be used for services, food supplies, shelter improvements, appliances, equipment, new food pantry staff, and food bank facility improvements. In the last quarter, the Neighborhood Service Center served 182 families totaling 364 individuals. In addition to 4,619 hot meals, St. Michael's Community Center provided 392 15-pound food pantry bags and 388 freezer bags to our local citizens. Each of the food pantries have confirmed that they will be able to spend the original and all subsequently approved CDBG COVID grant funds by the deadline of June 30, 2026. So, we are here this evening seeking council support and to host a public hearing for the grant increase of $150,000, $75,000 each with our two very active CDBG COVID food pantry partners.
Okay, that's great. So, okay, so, I guess at this time, I'll go ahead and open it up to the public hearing. And anybody would like to go ahead and come up and speak on behalf of the CDBG project on the amendment, you'll have three minutes. And if you're representing somebody, I'll give you five minutes.
Do we need to start by reading the title into the record? What, what the public hearing is?
Amendment number two to 2020 Maryland Community Development Lot Grant, CDBG Program, Federal Cares Act, COVID Funding for Homeless Shelters and Food Profs.
Okay, that sounds great. All right, like I said, anybody that would like to come on up here? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amy Horn. I'm the Executive Director for the St. Michael's Community Center. So, first of all, I'd like to thank the county council for being so supportive of our work that we do down at the community center. We are the social service hub for that part of Talbot County, for the whole Bay Hundred, from Roeloak on down to Tillman Island. And thanks to the support from the county, we are able to continue providing meals to, to residents in need. We deliver, every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we deliver at least 100 hot meals to homebound neighbors in need. In addition to serving another, it ranges anywhere from 50 to over 150 meals in the center on those days. Plus, we have our pantry bags. We have a well-stocked food pantry. We provide all three of those food distribution programs three days a week. Plus, on Tuesdays, we do a dedicated senior lunch. And so, and we typically have about 20 folks who are seniors. We also have a group of people from the Benedictine School who join them. And so, we really have an incredibly robust food distribution program. We could not do that without the county's support. We, we've been seeing an increase, as have many other pantries. And of course, we're very concerned about what's going to happen starting this Saturday when there is no more SNAP funding available. And so, we're preparing right now to see an increase in, in our food pantry needs. But also, I learned an interesting thing today, that many people, especially those who are homeless, they use their SNAP money to, they're, they're able to use their SNAP money to purchase hot, prepared foods. And that's a lot of times what they do because they don't have the means to prepare food themselves. So, we're anticipating an increase in our kitchen as well because of that. So, this funding would really help us be able to meet this increased need that we're seeing in the community. We also, we've got a lot of children in the neighborhood who, after school, they come right to the community center because they want a snack. Some of them will also shop the pantry shelves while they're there and go up to the counter to get a hot meal to take home for their dinner. And then they just go right out the back door onto whatever it is they're doing. So, we really, sometimes it's almost difficult for us to give an exact number of how many people we're feeding because we have so many different programs and so many different ways that we provide food to people in, in our communities. So, thank you for your consideration. And we really, like I said, I really appreciate the county council's support.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, would anybody else like to come up and, and speak about this? The CDBG money. Okay, all right, at this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And any discussion?
We've, we've, just, just that we've, we've heard really good testimony from Community Center Director Amy Horn. The need is very real in, in this county. With the audience that, that, that they serve. But, but also for, for the Neighborhood Service Center that will be impacted by this, this. And we know that this can't meet all of the need in the community. But this is an important stopgap measure that will, that will go some distance toward it. Just grateful that we have this opportunity.
Yep, exactly. So, okay.
Yeah, I, I agree with Councilman Lesher. In fact, I had a call today from someone that said that the Roeloak pantry, Amy down at the church, was empty. And so, they are really concerned about the SNAP benefits that will be lost effective on Saturday. So, we know that this will help a little bit, not solve the great need that we're going to have in Talbot County, but this is a start. So, thank you so much for all that you do, and the Neighborhood Service Center as well. We know that this would be a great asset for them and help them greatly.
It comes at a great time through the holidays as well.
Yeah, right.
Being able to serve some holiday meals.
Yeah.
It's fortuitous that this has come along and couldn't have come at a better time.
So, so, Mary Kay, what, what's our next step with this?
So, I don't think it's required, but if you want to make a motion to approve us moving forward with sending this information to DHCD to have them review and approve the second amendment that's funding for the additional $150,000.
So, just council direction.
Okay.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, well, we've got a, a motion second to go ahead and approve this application to try to get more money for the CDBG program. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay.
Aye.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you. Good, good job. Okay, okay, next on the agenda is introduction of an administrative resolution. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read that into the record, please?
An administrative resolution entitled, "A Resolution of Talbot County, Maryland, The County Authorizing the Issuance and Sale of General Obligation Bonds in a Principal Amount Not Exceeding $7,018,942 Pursuant to the Authority of Bill Number 1619 enacted by the County Council of Talbot County on August 12, 2025, the Public Local Law, Section 10203 of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, 2013 Replacement Volume as Amended, the Enabling Act, Sections 9-1601 to 91622 inclusive of the Environment Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland as replaced, supplemented or amended, the MWIFA Act, and Section 623 of the Charter of Talbot County, Maryland, the Charter, the bonds to be designated Talbot County, Maryland, General Obligation Bonds, MWIFA Project Series 2025, the net proceeds of the sale thereof to be used and applied for the public purpose of financing or refinancing the costs of certain wastewater facilities and sanitary district facilities, prescribing the form and tenor of the bonds and the terms and conditions for the issuance and sale thereof at private sale, providing for the dispersment of the proceeds of the bonds, authorizing the loan agreements in connection with the sale of the bonds, providing for the levy and collection of any taxes necessary for the prompt payment of the maturing principal of an interest on the bonds, and providing that the full faith and credit and taxing power of Talbot County, Maryland shall be pledged to the payment of such principal and interest, subject to the limitation on the tax levy set out in Section 614 of the Charter of Talbot County, and generally relating to the issuance, sale, delivery, and payment of the bonds."
Okay.
Good evening, Council. Martha Sparks, Director of Finance.
Ray Clark, County Engineer.
We have been working closely with Public Works on this. They've actually been working on this for three years.
Long time.
It's been a long time. So, we've had, we've had some hiccups along the way, but this, these are the last steps for us to go forward and close on these MDE bonds. And that closing our schedule with council's approval of this administration, this administrative resolution will be August 17 through the 19.
Okay.
So, we are, we're on our way.
Great, great.
And just note, I think from talking with Martha, I think we should be getting the funds by the end of, I think, November.
The end of November.
Yeah, so that's very good.
Yeah, so Jean Weisman, just can't say enough about how awesome Jean is. And Jean pulled everything together. So, these are, will be reimbursed for almost 100% of the bond. This is a reimbursement bond, which means that MDE has to approve all of the invoices that have been charged against this bond. So, Jean did all of that legwork. So, we will be, they will be submitting a payment to the comptroller on the day of closing, for a little over $5 million.
I got you. Okay, all right, good. Okay, all right, so, is there a motion?
I'll, I'll move for the resolution.
Okay, okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay, that sounds great, guys.
And I, I just want to say, what, what, you know, this, this is a quick approval. It's an easy decision for us. But this is really significant in what it's doing for our wastewater infrastructure and for ultimately cleaner waters in and around Talbot County. So, thanks, Mr. Clark, and to all your staff, and to Martha and your staff for, for all your work in, in moving this forward. This is, this is a really significant move and, and shouldn't go unremarked.
Thank you.
Yep. Great, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
And the secretary is very grateful that this didn't require a second reading.
Yes, exactly. And, and so is our bond counsel, too.
Yep. Okay, so, Jeannie Hadoway-Rickio is back in the building here. Okay, she snuck out on us pretty quick. So, Jeannie, you want to come on up, please? Yeah, we want to go ahead and hand you.
This is the, the proclamation for Nace's Day.
Yeah.
Second copy.
For the Historical Society, Jeannie.
Yeah, you want to share?
Sure. Okay. Well, for the record, Jeannie Hadoway-Rickio, I'm a board member of the Talbot Historical Society. And we're very pleased and proud to be working with Scotts United Methodist Church and the town of Trap. And of course, our, our friends here at the county to celebrate this important history in our community. And in an effort to try to bring the history to life, we have professional actor Darius Wallace, who will be joining us on November 1st on site in Trap to do a, a live presentation and reenactment of Nathaniel Hopkins' legacy. And also, there will be a repeat performance on November 3rd at the Oxford Community Center. I know that several of you joined us already for the parade and the other festivities. And we're just greatly appreciative to you for your support of these efforts to keep this history alive. Thank you.
Great, okay.
Thanks, Jeannie.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is going to be an introduction of legislation. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read that into the record, please?
A bill to amend Chapter 190, Zoning, Subdivision, and Land Development, Sections 190, 25.2, Table of Land Uses, and 190, 29, Commercial Uses Regarding Funeral Homes and Crematoria.
Okay, all right. Mr. Thomas, you want to go ahead and bring us up to speed on that?
Sure. So, this is a zoning text amendment that was requested by Brendan Mulaney on behalf of his client, Woodlawn Memorial Park. In July, the council voted to send this proposal to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation. And this bill reflects the Planning Commission's recommendation, which was developed in consultation with, with the applicant. The bill proposes to permit funeral homes and crematoria as special exception uses in the AC zoning district, subject to the following: a minimum property size of 40 acres. The property must abut a principal or minor arterial roadway. And the use must be operated in conjunction with a public cemetery offering services to the general public.
Okay, that's great. So, okay, this is the introduction. So, just go ahead and show of hands to introduce this.
So, introduced by Cal, Callahan, Step, Milky, and, and Hay.
Okay.
This will be known as Bill Number 1621. And the public hearing will be held on Tuesday, November 25 at 5:30 PM.
Okay, sounds great. I'm going to go ahead and read the, the next one, please, Madam Secretary.
A bill to amend Chapter 190, Zoning, Subdivision, and Land Development of the Talbot County Code for the purposes of providing for classes of short-term rental licenses and amending certain provisions pertaining to short-term rental licenses, including, one, the composition and term of the Short-Term Rental Review Board; two, contents of new applications; three, hearings, decisions, and appeals; four, renewal; five, grounds for denial; and six, additional restrictions.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Thomas, you want to give us just a brief on this, if you don't mind?
Yes, this, this zoning text amendment was requested by Vice President Lesher and Councilmember Milky. This follows the proposal they brought forward earlier this year, which the council had voted to send to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation. The, the bill reflects the proposal as initially brought forward with three changes, all of which had been recommended by the Planning Commission. So, the changes are the proposed increase in a minimum night stay for certain zoning districts... zoning districts from three days to seven, uh, seven days has been removed, the proposed requirement for a landline telephone has been removed, and the proposed requirement for keeping a log of rentals has been removed. Um, otherwise, the bill is as it was originally, uh, seen by council referred to the planning commission.
I got you.
The, the zoning, so the zoning code only requires that the planning commission review and make recommendations on zoning text amendments, uh, such as this. It doesn't actually require that the bill be bound by those recommendations. Um, and as, as this language has been reviewed by the planning commission, it is now eligible for introduction by the council, but any subsequent substantive amendments would need to go back to the planning commission for review and recommendation. So, just to outline the process and where we are.
Okay, okay, so at this time, it's just, um, to raise a hand to introduce?
Introduced by Lesher and Milkie.
Okay.
This will be known as Bill Number Sixteen Twenty Two, and the public hearing will be held on Tuesday, November twenty-fifth at five thirty PM.
Okay, that sounds good. All right. Next on the agenda is the county manager, so Jess is taking over tonight, so, play stuff, you know.
Jess.
He'll be, he'll be back tomorrow.
He'll be back.
He'll be back, though.
He'll be back.
Um, under board and committee appointments for the Animal Control Board, I'm requesting the appointment of Karen Roberts.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to go ahead and, uh, put Karen on the, uh, um, animal, animal control, yep. Um, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay.
Next, I have a request from the Department of Public Works to award change order number four for bid number twenty-two nineteen, Phase Two, Resolution Two Thirty-Five, Region Two Sewer System, Extension of Sewer, Force Main Installation. Ray is here to discuss the change order. This is, would be going to Schumer in the amount of one hundred thirty-seven thousand four hundred forty-seven dollars and seven cents.
Thank you. And Council, this is associated with, um, uh, Resolution Two Thirty-Five, our extension to, uh, of sewer into, let's say, um, uh, the Arcadia Shores, Averyly Farm areas, um, as well as, um, Big Bend, or I'm sorry, um, North Bend and, uh, some areas in Royal Oak as well as, uh, Roals Range. Uh, this is associated with materials that we had to have, um, that was in, in addition to what was originally specified. So, um, this is just basically making sure we have all the, um, I's dotted and T's crossed for the funding.
Sure, okay.
And it's coming out of contingency as well, that's already been identified.
Okay, make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay.
Great, next, we have a request from the Department of Parks and Recreation, and we have Brian Harris, the Facilities Manager here, to utilize fiscal year twenty-six capital outlay funding for the purchase and installation of eight water source heat pump units at the community center. And this will be piggybacking on a contract through Wycomico County. Um, and this would be to award the work to Electrical Automation Services in the amount of one hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred and three dollars. And again, there are sufficient funds available in the fiscal year twenty-six capital outlay budget. And, uh, Brian, if there's anything to fill in?
No, this is a, uh, a long overdue, uh, process. We got, uh, aging equipment out there and we're just trying to start the process the next two years, get them, get them changed out.
Okay, sounds good. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay, thanks a lot, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. And, uh, we also have a request this evening from Hognet Golf Course. You have Rich Sutter here, your golf course manager, uh, to award bid twenty-five seventeen asphalt paving, front nine cart paths at Hognet Golf Course, and we're requesting the award to the sole bidder, East Coast Land Management, in the amount of two hundred seventy-seven thousand and eight dollars, and there are sufficient funds in the capital budget for this.
That's good.
Good evening, everybody. Rich Sutter, Hognet Golf Course. Any questions?
Rich, this is part one of three, right?
Correct.
To, we were, because we were breaking it out over three, three years to repave everything.
So, front, front nine this fall, next fall, back nine, following fall, executive course.
Perfect, nice, good job, good.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay, good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, lastly, this evening, I have a request to declare Tuesday, November fourth as a special legislative day. Uh, the council's meeting schedule has changed slightly for the month of November. You will be meeting on November fourth and November twenty-fifth. The fourth is the first Tuesday of the month, and we're requesting that be declared a special legislative day.
Okay.
I'll move to, uh, declare November fourth as, as the special legislative day.
And second. Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good job, good job. You're a lot faster than Clay.
We like it.
God, no, we love it, we love it.
We won't tell him now.
Yeah, don't tell him.
Okay, all right, so, next, um, uh-oh. There we go, there we go, Mr. Lesher.
So, for public comment tonight, we have one person who signed up in, in advance, and that is Bradley Chaney.
Yes, sir, come on up.
Hi, my name is Brad the Chaney. I'm a person that suffers with mental, uh, illness and would like to help people that are homeless or anybody that wants to save money on rent, especially those with mental illness. I painstakingly researched ways to live in a civilized way in a tent that allows a person to function in society as a working citizen, meeting at a fanways, a shower, without a gym membership outside, warm oneself with portable thermal electric heat that fits in your backpack, all without causing a disturbance in society like negating the need to, to make fire pits in the street, since thermal electric is safe and quiet. It's all possible, I have the research that shows how to do all this, uh, but because it's not legal to pitch a tent on any public or private property, nobody is allowed to even try something like this. I have tried, as I've done this in my backyard and with experiments when I was voluntarily homeless. I would love to share this information, but I really don't know how, so here I am. Uh, the difference between this and a homeless shelter is that it may be cheaper in the long term if the person sustains their gear properly to make it last long, but also, if someone were allowed to do this, they'd be empowered to teach themselves to live responsibly since they now have something to protect. They'd be able to save money on rent and would always have something to work towards since they can al- since they can always buy more upgrades for their tent set up, thus they'd be more likely to invest in proper gear instead of drugs or al- drugs and alcohol. I call this, uh, this all of the Mindian method, short for modern Indian, as if Native Americans slash Indians woke up in modern society and embraced modern technology with their same lifestyle of living in a tent. Uh, as someone that's used these items to sustain, to sustain myself in cir- in circumstances where I was truly homeless, I can safely say that I think these items slash products, when used in the right way, can save lives. If you have any questions about how these remedies have found work and what they are, feel free to ask.
Okay, thanks a lot, I appreciate it.
Can, can we make sure that we get his, uh, contact information for staff so that we can, uh, do the proper follow-ups?
Yep, be great. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, anybody else like to come on up? Okay, nothing tonight? Nothing. Okay, okay, got you.
Got you.
All right, you're welcome. Um, okay, uh, council comments, I guess I'll start off with Mr. Step over here. How are we? Good?
Pretty, pretty quiet today.
Pretty quiet, okay.
It was a great meeting, great celebrations and, uh, you know, all good things for Talbot County as always.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lesher?
Yes, today, today was the funeral for Mike Heiner.
Yeah, yeah.
A principal of Willow Construction, a deacon of the Lutheran Church, a pillar of this community, and a family man. Mike's integrity boosted the reputation of Willow Construction, which built a number of high-profile projects around this community, the Temple Benay Israel, and the New Emergency Services Training Center, uh, which we just dedicated, uh, this, uh, this past Saturday. Projects for the county government itself, including the new basketball courts at the Talbot County Community Center. Mike was taken from us at far too young an age, and so many in this community are going to feel this loss. Uh, our sincerest condolences go out to the Heiner family. I have a, I have a second item here, which is, uh, that la- last month, for September, two thousand one hundred forty-five Talbot County households, with nearly thirty-seven hundred individuals, including almost fifteen hundred children, this is approximately ten percent of our county's entire population, received an aggregate of six hundred and six thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents in SNAP benefits. This is a topic that came up earlier in this meeting. As a consequence of the dysfunction of Congress and the administration, all of these Talbot County residents are at risk of losing the support on our food banks, the Talbot County Public Schools, Care Packs, Brooklyn's Place, and other local organizations are bracing for the impact, which undoubtedly, they cannot fully backfill. At the same time, they are anticipating the needs of furloughed federal employees and contractors. They are in Talbot County too, two of them in Easton that I know, who are personally stretched thin. These consequences will be felt by our neighbors, and indeed, some of them already feel them.
Okay, thank you.
That's a hard act to follow.
That is, that was tough, yeah, yeah.
Um, just happy Halloween, everybody, and be sure to check out Naces Day.
Mm-hmm, yep, yep.
Well, first, I want to give a shout-out to our Talbot County government, um, volleyball team that plays their first game tonight at Parks and Rec, at the gym, so, that's exciting, so I wanted to give that shout-out. But second, um, certainly echo what Councilman Lesher said about Mike Heiner. Um, he was supposed to be at our groundbreaking ceremony last week when I got the news that he had passed away, and that would have been our second, um, construction project together, so, it, it really touched me at that event because Mike was truly a kind and humble being, and we could learn a lot from, from him. Um, but to also, um, piggyback off of what Councilman Lesher said about SNAP benefits, um, our community is going to feel that sooner rather than later. Um, and also, I would like council to consider if there is anything that we can collectively do in response to that, but also, federal workers, because we have federal workers right here in Talbot County, um, that have reached out, and they're not getting paid. They're being furloughed and they're not getting a paycheck, so, um, I would really like us to really try and put our heads together to see what type of resources we can start to bring to the forefront for our federal workers specifically, um, that live right here in Talbot County, because I do believe we have to take care of our own, um, first and foremost. Um, so with that, God bless everyone and have a wonderful, um, rest of your week.
Yep, and I, and I'll just, um, comment too on Mike, um, Heiner with Willow too. He, he's a special man, special family, pillar of the community, like Pete was saying. Um, he meant so much to the community, that, that's for sure. Not only that, he, he meant a lot to us as Weston Callahan too, because we worked together. Um, we, we shared work together. Um, and then, the, the other special thing is, I knew his father very well, and I worked with his father, was a draftsman, and I worked with him in the eighties, so, um, him and his mom. So, um, very close family, very beautiful family, and, um, my heart goes out to him. Um, but, um, I really appreciate the time we spent together and worked together. So, um, the other thing is, is I really want to grad- congratulate Keisha, because Thursday was a special day for you, for the groundbreaking, and you did a great job. Um, we had a lot of phenomenal people there, you know, you had the First Lady there, that's, you know, so that, that took a little bit of, something to get her there, you know.
Took some work.
It did, it did, and, um, you know, I'm, I'm proud of you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you asking me to say a few words, and it wa- it was fun. And, um, you know, I'm going to wish you luck and you're going to be, um, definitely going to be leading a lot of things, because you've got a little niche, that's for sure, helping them young ladies, so, I'm proud of what you're doing and, um, and, um, you know, you're going to do good work, that's for sure, in the future, and I appreciate that.
Well, thank you for coming, Councilman Step, Councilman Milkie. Pete couldn't be with us, but thank you all for attending, I greatly appreciate that.
Great event.
Yep, it was, it was awesome, so, okay, other than that, Pete, last word.
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, November fourth, which has been declared a special legislative day, beginning at five o'clock PM.